Is it time? What does your computer say? Is it 5:30? Oh, okay. That's why Jason didn't say anything to me yet. Thank you. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is Bella Vista City Council Work Session, July 17, 2023. First item on the agenda is a review of the minutes of the regular meeting, June 26, 2023. Anybody have any comments on that? You can take some more time to review them. I did want to mention for a platoon of the new business, you know, the STR situation is still in litigation, so it'd be a good idea not to talk to the press or talk to people about the case. So, thank you. Because Glenda Kelderman, our HR director, is here, I'm going to go a little bit out of order and go straight to this discussion item of elected officials' compensation. I passed out a one-page sheet for you, and I wanted to make a couple of comments before we started, just explanatory. I was contemplating if anything was done, it would start January 1, 2024, because it's easier for the accounting and whatnot. That's how we usually do it. In the past, what we've tried to do is look at the average of the big cities in northwest Arkansas and be something less than that. That's why I put on that sheet what 90% was and 85% and 80%, but you guys can consider different things. But that's kind of the concept we've had in the past. Now, for employees, we've tried to be competitive with all those cities. But for the elected officials, under the theory we're a little smaller and less rich, we've tried to be a little less. I had a couple notes on the mayor's salary. We've had a big change historically. Almost the whole time I was on city council, there was one employee that made more than the mayor, and now there's six. And one of the reasons for that is we did a salary survey about the compensation for people. This is back when I was still on council, and found that our directors, some of them were underpowered a little bit, so that resulted in some changes. There's some numbers on there about city councils, and I, some of you might be aware, about a month or two ago, Bentonville City Council gave their council a 40% raise. So it was a big increase. I think they were a little bit underpowered where they were at. I also wanted to explain about on this sheet about the city clerk. We've always struggled with comps for the city clerk. Some of them are part-time, some are full-time. I just noted on there that a couple of them make over $100,000. Now, they are clerk and treasurer. Some cities have a clerk and treasurer, and some just clerk. So that's why it's really hard to get good comps. And I did notice that Salem Springs is full-time and is $66,000. So in my opinion, that means we have some room to run, because they're a smaller city than we are, and our clerk's at $23,100. The last thing is, in regard to the city clerk, last year we had about 20 or 22 ordinances the whole year, and this year we've had 38 in the first half of the year. So for either reasons, the workload's gone up pretty significantly. It looks like we'll end up having triple number of ordinances we had last year. So anyway, that's the only comments I had. If anybody would like to chime in with their thoughts.
Well, as far as the clerk goes, you know, we need to take care of that situation. But as far as trying to compare us to anybody, you really can't. We don't have industry, we don't have a whole lot of commercial, we don't have any schools, we don't have any parks, we don't have water, we don't have sewer, we don't have electric. You know, it's hard to compare us to Bentonville or anybody else because of our workload. Now, I don't have a problem with, you know, compensation, whatever, but I don't feel because of most of that, we shouldn't get any more than cost of living or what we're willing to give the employees. Period.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in in any way?
No, I would say, you know, we look at the numbers, and we understand what they are, and we can see other cities, whatever. You know, rather than myself recommending what I think it should be, I'd like for somebody else to land on a number, maybe outside the council, like maybe our HR director. For somebody, I don't know, but I don't know. I just get, I'm just not, I mean, I worked up the numbers, right, a couple years ago, hadn't even that long ago.
Yeah.
Just to kind of give us something to look at, right, comparatively. But again, rather than maybe us coming up with a recommended number, maybe we have our HR director do that, if she might be willing. And I do, now, Wanda, you know, for our city clerk, it's really hard, you know, to see, you know, and put perspective around all the time she spends, but I know it's significant in the office, because none of us work in the office. I mean, we're in there. I know that she and then Wayne prior to her, they were in there a lot. So I don't know how many hours she actually spends, but I know it's more than what probably she's being compensated for at the present time, for sure.
Well, yeah, as far as the city clerk, Wanda doesn't work for me. She works for the people, but obviously I ended up working with her a lot, and I'm really pleased with her intelligence and talent level and work ethic. So I think there's definitely, like I say, room to run there. Glenda, would you like to say a few words on the subject matter?
Oh, you don't have to.
One observation about the number of ordinances is that we've had a lot of rezonings, which are all covered by an ordinance. So it's a repetitive thing, even though each of the ordinances is specific to that particular site. But that's the driving force, I think, for the more ordinances.
Well, it's certainly been part of it, but, you know, from the clerk's point of view, it's still more work, no matter what it's about.
It is more work for the clerk, there's no doubt. One thing that I don't, we might need to look at is our publication cost budget, because those have to be published. And so I don't know where we are on that, but something to, just as we're talking about numbers, I just happen to think about that, so we'll need to look at that. I'm sure we didn't budget for twice as many ordinances in a year.
One thing I'd like to say about the clerk is very much, it's very similar to, can you hear? Okay. Something that was brought up by our mayor, which is, when we get the salary study back from the municipal league, those clerk jobs are all over the board. They don't even give any kind of real job description. And I know it's not a paid city position, it's an elected position. And again, like he has referenced, a lot of these jobs, and I don't really understand this, Jason could probably explain it, but some are just an elected individual, some are basically the finance director and the clerk, which are those higher-paid roles. Most are full-time jobs of some sort. There's only a few that come up as part-time. So as far as me making a recommendation, I would say Wanda puts a lot of effort into it. She's looking at some great ideas of better ways of doing things. I think that's valuable to the city, which should be a consideration in how you look at her salary for next year. I work for the mayor, but the mayor is an elected position. I hate to put myself in a position where I'm giving a lot of recommendations about my boss's salary, quite frankly. So, and as far as city council goes, I think, you know, some of what you said is true was that, you know, we don't have all of the same things that other cities do. I think you need to kind of assess, how much time are you spending every month getting ready for this meeting, getting ready for the other meeting? And that all plays into where you're going to land with what you do for next year or the following year. Other than that, I don't know what else to say at this present time.
One comment is, is that I think the city of Bentonville, the city clerk is a part-time position, but she has a full-time job. So I believe that's the case, and so her duties for the city clerk absorb, or whatever, are filled in with other work activities, I believe.
I think, Larry, you're correct. I think the actual elected city clerk is not the full-time person. I think they do a lot through the mayor's office that, and then the city clerk is more of an official role just in signing off and the official record keeper and things, but they have sort of divided those duties in a way. One of the things I can, Glenda brought it up, but yes, when we were first a city, we had a combined city clerk treasurer, and that was an elected position. And then a decision was made by Bella Vista to separate those, which state law allows. And so we did that, and then went with a finance director role, which is not elected, and that's the situation we have now. So the finance part was taken out of the city clerk role. I can tell you this, around the state, the reason they're so hard, it's so hard to come up with comparables is because the duties and the sizes of the cities and the needs are so different. You may have a smaller town, maybe 2,500, 3,000 people in town, which would be a tenth of our size, but that person is the one at city hall that answers the phone, takes the water bill payment, takes the traffic ticket payment, acts as de facto secretary for the mayor, coordinates all the water manager, and, you know, does all the payroll, and all, yeah, right, it has to, well, that scares me a little bit, but you're right, they do, right. But so it's really, it can be a sort of the city catch-all person, and so, and that's a big job that you compensate for, and then other jobs are totally different, and then sometimes there's a lot of support, and sometimes there's not, sometimes there's different expectations. So it's just hard to compare, even though they may have the same title.
All right. I want to set myself up to be T-Dawg on, probably. I'm not positioning myself for a promotion of a raise or anything like that. I just want to say, and we have elections coming up in about a year and a half, but I don't want anybody to get the impression that we don't have a lot of responsibility and we don't need to spend a lot of time, because that would be misleading. If you fulfill the responsibility of a city council member, I don't care what city it is, whether it be Rogers or Bentonville, or, you know, Podunk, Arkansas, Bella Vista, you're going to spend a lot of time. And I will tell you, and it's okay with me, I'm not embarrassed by the compensation we receive right now, considering the time I spend. But, and I know that there are other people on the council are the very same, that a lot of my days are shot, right, from doing things I'd like to do personally. But I have a meeting here, I have a meeting there, and those meetings take time, they take preparation. You know, we have the rezones, and I'm out in my truck, driving around, checking out all of them. And I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want anybody to get the impression that there's not a lot of responsibility here, and it doesn't take really a significant amount of time, if you fill the role of a city council member position responsibly, like you're supposed to, you know. So, and again, whether I get another dime or not, doesn't really matter to me that much. I just don't want to be misleading in the role, because again, we have elections coming up here in a year and a half, and I just want to be sure people understand, this is not something that you do, you know, fly around by the seat of your pants. You know, other than just filling responsibility, there's going to be a lot of research on new people's parts, you know, and understanding how you're expected to fill the role, you know, because there's a lot of time and research that goes into that as well. Anyway, having said that, I'll let it go at that.
Yeah, I have always observed in my time on city council, that city council always feels very awkward about their own compensation in particular. And they've done an admirable job, I think, in keeping it pretty reasonable. But it's a funny situation, but that's the way the law sets it up. So, anyway, I wanted to bring it up, because you need some time to think about it, and we want to make sure we do it in time, you know, to get it into the budget figures and whatnot. So, so you can go ahead, and this is just a discussion item, you can go ahead and give it some thought.
When would be the timeline where we would make a decision on this? Budget-wise?
Well, we generally approve a budget in December, and if we're really on it, maybe in November, but usually we end up doing it in December.
Yeah.
The whole budget prep will kick in around Labor Day. That's when we'll really kick into the planning.
And the plan that was presented, what, a year and a half ago or two years ago, for all of the elected officials, was revised when someone saw, oh, the calculation is a 50% increase. And so we changed the numbers a little bit as a result of that. But I think the, well, it was a 50% calculation. I don't know that the numeric value was all that earth-shaking or excessive.
Yeah, I did want to mention, Jim brought this up, I think, very appropriately, about how the employees are compensated. And, you know, the world's changed a little bit the last few years. Glenda and I talk about employee compensation every month, and there's certain departments in particular, some of our competition has made some big increases. So I know Glenda and the police chief are talking about different strategies, and what's the best way to approach it and whatnot. But there's been several increases, and, but we're definitely thinking about it. That, I would say the employment market has gotten a little softer. For a while, it was just hard to get people, period. It took us forever to hire for some jobs. And now we're getting applications, and even a good amount of applications, and the fire and police guys are doing a good job of getting good candidates, so, which is encouraging. You know, Glenda was telling me, St. Louis used to have hundreds of people come and try for police, and recently they had a try day, and they had zero people. No one showed up to be a policeman to test for it. And we've been fortunate, we're still able, we've been able to get, I know the chief works hard on it, but we've been able to still get some good young candidates. So it's encouraging. So, anyway, think about that, and we can go ahead on our agenda with the rest of the meeting.
Because I guess one of the cautions, in reality, is, is for a while, it seemed as though the cities in northwest Arkansas were in a bidding war to get key people in the public safety sector and in the public works generally, or at least it appeared that way from the outside. That may not have been true. Our HR director would be able to respond to that, but I think the reality is, we don't want to get into a bidding war to fill those positions. That could be a never-ending process, and we would never win, because we don't have the base, the income base that the other cities do. We don't have the sales tax revenue like Bentonville and Rogers and Springvale and a few of the other cities. So I think we would suffer greatly from trying to get into that race, which is a challenge for us.
Well, thanks for that comment. Yeah, we, there has been some aggressiveness in compensation in northwest Arkansas, and I think part of it has been the job market. And part of it is, the federal government, you know, gave all the cities and the county money. So made people feel a little freer, perhaps, some of our other cities, to spend anyway. Yeah, that's what we'll look at.
You know, when it came down to it, though, you know, we jumped a bunch of people around to get them where they needed to be. But you still look at, when you look in the budget, you're looking at 3.5% or 4% per employee is what we stuck in there. You know, we bounced people around to get them in the right position. But basically, when we did the budget, looking 3.5%, 4%, maybe 4.5%, you know, across the board. That's what I'm looking at there.
Yeah.
So like the cost of living.
I did forget to mention, at the beginning of this, the mayor and city council's last increase was January 1, 2022. So it'll be two years by the time this gets in. And the city clerk did get a little increase in the beginning of 2023, but I still agree with the comments people made about doing something significant there. So, anyway, so unless anybody else has a comment, we'll get on with the rest of the agenda. Okay. Item A, thanks, Glenda, for your input. Item A is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023-48834, county parcel number 1670254000, and 1670254003, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And this is the Kingsdale Maintenance Facility.
Is it the big one or the small one up behind Shakespeare?
It's the small one.
Small one behind Shakespeare?
Yeah. Did you want to hear anything from Tom? Tom Judson's here, if you want to hear anything from him about it? Everybody's shaking their head, no, Tom.
Well, I know Planning Commission recommended to send this on, you know, with their approval as well.
Yes, yes, that's accurate. Second one is amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49581, county parcel number 16-78018004, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And that is the Metfield Secondary Maintenance. It's on Jack Crabtree. And I believe the Planning Commission approved this one, or recommended this one also, I should say.
One of the commissioners, I think this is the one, Mr. Sedbury had some comments. Would you enlighten us? Could you enlighten us, please, Ms. Robertson?
Without reviewing the minutes, I'm worried his issue was that the comprehensive plan doesn't have anything for this area. It just marks it as a giant future park privately owned. So that was his comment. And so I think he said, I wish that the comprehensive plan delineated this as a future node at some point. And then he voted no.
But it still was approved by the rest of the commission.
It's a bit past with the recommendation of approval. And the staff is also recommending approval of this one.
I had thought he was talking about the fact that it was surrounded by R1.
Well, it's actually surrounded by Benton County.
Yeah.
It's unincorporated land around it. So there is no R1 around it. There's nothing around it besides unincorporated, non-zoned property.
Thank you for that. Yeah.
So both north and south on Crabtree, the Jack Crabtree Road, those are outside the city?
Yeah, there's a unique, if you look at the staff report, you'll see the zone map. There's a gray piece, there's obviously the tiny piece that connects us to this giant piece of property.
Ooh, okay.
And then there's gray on both sides, sitting in a sea of thin air.
So the master plan is suggesting that a park be expanded or created in this general geographic area? Is that kind of what the gist of it was?
It's specific, it just identifies it as common land.
I mean, this is a one-acre tract of land, right?
Well, yeah. It's a meets and bounds of only one acre. So they're only wanting to rezone the actual land use itself, the maintenance facility. So the rest of it, the giant golf course, will stay as P1.
Yeah, it's the green area that's highlighted on this map right here, right? So it has a maintenance building, that's all it is. It's not 60 acres, it's one acre.
No, it's one acre.
One and a half, fifty-nine.
Okay. Are we ready to move on then?
Yep.
Ordinance C is amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map the rezoned property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49824, county parcel 16-29541000, from P1 Conservation to R1 Residential Single Family District. And I believe this refers to Ten Dunn Donald Lane.
My question is, how does that lot get zoned as P1 amongst all the residential lots? I mean, was that not a reg land, a lot that was?
I have a theory. I think it was a map error.
It was what?
A map error. I think whenever that was all done, I think that for some reason, that lot just got the wrong color on the map when it was adopted.
Residential all around, and houses are out there, and that one lot is a P1 lot, which makes no sense to me.
I mean, obviously, the council approved what it approved, the map said what it said, but I think it probably slipped by.
Did we not find more of these as we've gone through? Did we not find more of these as we've gone through? So it may have been a throw a dart at the map and create some parkland.
I don't know about that. I would more agree with the attorney's theories that it's probably an error. We found a couple of them. I know a couple already came through, you guys, but we found even a couple more that were open to fix with a mass rezone. Or if someone comes to develop, like this applicant has, obviously, will need a rezone for it. I did want to know in between now or the regular meeting yesterday, there was a public comment received that wasn't attached in your package?
I believe it's concerning septic. There was a concern that this is like, this isn't applicable for septic. That is not correct. This does have an ADH permit. It'd hurt for a standard two-bedroom house, so just to address that on the record. But yeah, I think we're just cleaning up a map error here. The plat even has the usual residential land use restriction on it, just like all the other R1.32 lots in Bellis. It needs our local requirements as well. There's no reason we shouldn't have been. Zone is hard on, I'll go back then, so.
When you think about it, if you make the capital letter P, if you don't bring that little line down, make it an R, then it's a P, right?
It could be, yeah. It's another theory.
I think if memory serves, I think the Replanting Commission helped us with our mapping when we did that. And so we wanted to.
Thank you for that input. Okay, let's go to D. I'm going to do D and E together. D is amending Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2023-49912, county parcel 1640236000, from R1 Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And E is amending Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in 2023-49795, county parcel number 1679388, from R1 to C1. And those two both have the same attachment, I believe, descriptive attachment.
This is the Lambeth and Mercy Way intersection. It's about a little over 17 acres. You've probably seen the rock that's moving around. They have their permits for that. They have floodplain approval. They have a lawnmower that went active in December of 2022. They have their grading and road control application from staff with a review of our engineering. So all of that dirt work that's moving on is permitted. This is separate from that. This is a rezone request by meets and bounds. And since there's two parcels of the subject area, that's why there's two rezone numbers. So typically, each rezone number and payment goes with each parcel. Staff did want to note this does meet our future land use plan. There's calls for a, our most intense zone or node. So it's supposed to be our future community destination. So staff will note just based off that, there is an intense C3 surrounding this area. This could also support a more intense zone such as C2, especially with the land being so large. However, staff will note that staff is working with the applicant on getting a new exhibit for you guys to meet the Planning Commission's recommendation and staff's recommendation. They are working on getting a new exhibit that excludes the floodway because we want to zone that as P1 per R code. R code blocks streams, floodways, and items like that to be zoned as P1 Conservation. And so they're working on a new exhibit for you guys.
Okay, so to your point, I apologize, this is all I have, right? So right now, this is, it's the red boundary.
The whole red boundary.
Is what is being proposed. But, because I read that, it's you wanted to exclude the P1, which, so is this going to happen in between now and next Monday?
Probably, that would be a question for the applicant, but probably not. I'm not sure if his survey is going to get something drawn.
So do we want to go ahead and go through with first reading on next Monday then and just hold off until we get the new, the new plan?
Yeah, let's do that.
That seems like it'd be smarter, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the other question I had about this is, they asked for C1, and I guess they recommended that to us?
Planning Commission recommended C1 to you guys excluding the floodway.
But you guys are saying it should be C2.
Staff is noting this area does propose a potential more intense area such as C2.
So why wouldn't we make it C2? I mean, we can give more than they asked for, right?
Yeah.
You can, you can do whatever you want when it comes to zoning. You don't have to be more restrictive or less restrictive. It is a council legislative decision. So you could, you're not bound by the terms of the application or by the Planning Commission.
So what was the developer's original intent?
They requested C1.
Okay.
And so we took that forward because that's what the request was. Our staff just noted this could also be a C2 area for you guys to consider.
But, and I also wonder about with our, you know, zoning study coming up, you would think the zoning, the study people might come back and say, hey, that should be C2. So.
But we are also in the process of reviewing the collective categories in our commercial districts to see whether they need to be realigned as a part of a planning document review. Is that not correct?
Yeah, with the reform, we will analyze our current zoning districts and comprehensive plans and see if new districts need made or if the existing districts are altered. That will be a part of that.
So it might be premature for us to jump into this with a C2. Request was a C1, the Planning Commission acted as a C1. We would be appropriate maybe to follow through and follow the, if we don't have a dispute with it, follow the Planning Commission's recommendation. But, but go, because of the legal description needing to be there to make a clear definition of what is C1 versus floodplain, we would want to maybe hold, hold off final approval and not do that at the first meeting.
Staff did not request a third final.
No.
At the first meeting, because we didn't, we didn't want to.
But if there's a survey pending to clarify the areas for both C or D and E, then it would be wise for us to wait for final approval on that until it came in. I'd give the applicant another month to finish it, so.
Yeah, I think that would be good to wait on that.
Well, Gene's here. I mean, do you have any comments, Gene? I mean, can we?
Good idea.
First of all, the developer doesn't object to, if you guys want to do a C2 zoning, we would not object to that. We thought C1 would be a simpler process based upon past experience. But you guys are, you know, like I said, we have absolutely no objection for either a C1 or C2 designation. As for the P1 designation, staff had originally recommended that we do the creek bed or the floodway. And so I talked to my surveyor about it. He's working on it currently. And he pointed out to me, which is correct, I believe, that that floodway is going to change every remapping. The legal description will change. And I suggested that I didn't believe that absolute precision was required in this situation. What my understanding of planning and city council probably would be is that they want to make sure that the river area is protected and designated P1. So that's what we're attempting to do, and it will be roughly the floodway. So floodway will be described, and then the other parcels, we can do a lessen except. We have a boundary description now that encompasses the area that's under consideration for C1 zoning. We could simply do a lessen except when we get the legal description for the P1, and that should work.
But you agree with our concept of waiting until the map is done?
Well, we're currently trying to build a path there. So it's going to, you know, our permit still exists, so we'll continue that process. It's not going to stop that process. So it's not going to really prevent any additional work being done at this point in time.
Oh, good.
Any additional questions?
And since 1977, it's never flooded, never had any water on it. Never.
I want to remind the council a little bit.
Ever. Because what used to get flooded out was when they widened the creek, that's the part that used to flood.
But remember that development considerations are separate from zoning.
Well, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that in all them years, there's never been water on that chunk of ground they're talking about.
And be it zone C1, C2, or whatever, there's still going to be development restrictions relates to that floodplain and.
Yeah, and I understand. I'm just saying that never had water on it to be a floodplain. Never got redone.
Right.
I have a question for Taylor. Do you happen to know what Allen's, off the top of your head, is zoned for, that area?
It's C3, off the top of my head.
Okay.
What was the question?
Would the Allen's area just west of what they're proposing?
What about it?
What is zoned for?
Yeah, maybe it's C3, just to the west of it.
Awesome, thank you.
You know, I know I could look it up on the GIS map, but just because I'm curious, this, so to the, to the north of the red right now, there's like a blank right here. I'm assuming that that is POA land, I guess. And then there's a, there's a segment of land right behind it, all in blue. I could see it's residential behind that.
So just north of the red is more to private land.
That's private land there. Okay, restricted.
It's a meets and bounds. That red is a meets and bounds.
Okay.
Like approximate location.
You see this open area right here, right?
Yes.
And then there's another piece, a parcel right here.
The skinny one?
Yeah.
That's common.
That's common, okay. So there's a lot of buffer there. Okay, I'm just trying to get questions answered before, just in case it comes back. All right, okay.
C4 is like a really dark red.
So if you want to delay, I just want to remind, and we do have folks that haven't been on the council as long, that may not have done this, but you can do two things. You can do, you could table it and have first reading next month. Table it till next month and have first reading next month. Or you can go and have first reading Tuesday, no, or excuse me, next Monday, and then just let it go to second reading next month, and then you can amend it at that time.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to correct the record because the phone color is a little different from the front end. So yeah, the phone is showing a much darker color, so it's actually C4.
You said it's appropriate to kind of go lower or smaller as you go in, correct?
Well, with the.
On the highway, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the idea, is that you start really intense right there, the major arterial intersection, and lesser the way you go out. But yeah, sorry, Allen's is C4, which is our most intense commercial zone.
I did notice at the Planning Commission, there wasn't any citizen comment or negativity of any sort. So it's not a case where the citizens are concerned about it. Okay. Thank you. That was a good discussion. Okay, let's go to F, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group in the amount of $40,098 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevy Silverado 1500 truck for use by the Community Development Services Department. Doug, did you want to make a comment on that?
Sure, Mayor. You know, with the restructure, we've recently, three tow trucks went to the police and four building trucks went to fire. So now we have 12 people with four vehicles. So we budgeted last year to add two vehicles even before we knew that was going to happen. So we do need those now. I could only get one now, and I'll probably come back to you later in the year if you approve this one to get enough.
Yeah, I think originally, when you budgeted, you were thinking maybe $35,000 each, and they ended up being a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm probably reading something wrong here because the ordinance is for a Silverado for $40,980, right? And then we're also sourcing a Ram 1500, is that right?
No, I was just showing you the two quotes on the truck.
Okay, that was just a quote. So we're just getting one vehicle right now. Okay.
The Rams are what we have in the department, but this truck was $4,000 cheaper. So the street department mechanic said he prefers the Chevy, so I want the Chevy.
Okay.
So he's saving money and being polite to the mechanic all in one, feels woo. Any more questions? Okay, G is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $59,548 for the purchase of one 2023 Dodge Charger police pursuit vehicle for use by the police department. Chief, did you want to add anything?
This is one of the many vehicles that we had on the bus this year. We've just spaced them out over the year. Actual price of the vehicle is around $37,000 and change, the remainers, the equipment outfitted vehicle.
And instead of state bids, you're still getting them from that dealer in Silo?
We're still using the Silo Springs dealer. The state still hasn't done official bid for police vehicles. So this is, I think, the third year they've done this. So we'll just have to continue like this into the future. But we still get a really decent price from this, from this dealer who we've used for years.
Yeah.
I thought they were going to quit making the Dodge Charger.
Well, so, yeah, so that might be something. We're not sure. I've heard those, a little bit of that too. And then a lot of the police departments throughout the nation kind of got with Dodge and said, hey, that's, you know, one of the main vehicles we're using. So I think they're rethinking that for the, for the police side. I'm not sure. But we're going to have to look at that next year because every time we change platforms and limit our platforms, it's, it costs us more because we can't use the same cages, the same bards, the same equipment. So we try to stick with the same platforms, but it becomes problematic. We still have the Chevy Tahoe, but that's a, I'm not sure if that's really appropriate for all of our vehicles to be that, because it's more expensive and it's, it just, we could probably do better. So we have to look at some different platforms. If Dodge does do that, we're not sure if they will or not now.
There's always something, isn't there?
Always something. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. H is amending section 2201 duties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to clarify the duties of the city clerk and for other purposes. And the reason for this is when Wanda came on, you know, she was, as a responsible new person would, she was checking everything, and that ordinance we're operating under was older, and she noticed a lot of things that didn't match up with the reality. Like it said, she was going to take minutes of the committee, the whole, you know, and things, things like that just didn't really apply. So this amendment is on the one section, and she took a few months to make sure she had a good list of the duties, so that was the point of it. So just trying to be accurate with the reality of it.
What you're saying is it takes off duties that, what you're saying, Mayor, is that it removes duties that are no longer applicable to that position?
Yeah, and then adding things maybe that were, so making it a little more accurate, which is, it had been a number of years, so it's not surprising. Maybe things changed around a little from what they, you know, thought they might be. So. Next one is I approving the mayor's appointment of Scott R. Martin to position seven on the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2026. And it has some thing about his background, resume type thing about his background on here. So looks like he's got a lot of relevant experience. Next one after that.
How did some of these recommendations come to you, Mayor? I'm just curious.
That's a good question.
City advertisers that may apply online and they come to.
Okay. So you sourced it.
We look through them and send the recommendations.
Yeah.
We actually send them several of his ones. But in this case, we only got two applicants.
So we took the top two. Yeah. Well, I happen to know. I happen to know the guy in J approving the mayor's appointment of Wade Stewart to position six on the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals for a term ending January 1, 2026. So both of the terms in the same, but yeah, I know him. He's a good guy. I don't know anything about his engineering expertise, but he seems to have quite an impressive resume also. Next one, K is adopting the NWARPC Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan. And they attached the plan here. And, you know, this was all laid out back in 2014, so I think they thought it would be a good idea, go back and, you know, take a look at it, make some adjustments and whatnot. Things change and your plans change a little bit. And so this lays out the current plan. I read it over. It's pretty much what I expected or thought was in the works. You know, they're talking about the hard surface going up to the Missouri line and, and maybe improving some of the east-west connections. And they had some, I liked some of the discussion about, because it's what we're thinking of anyway, is having some, improving our situation with hard surface and connections. You know, they, I forget exactly how they refer to them, but, you know, it's a sidewalk or a trail or whatever, some kind of hard surface where people can, you know, have better ability to get around by walking or biking. That's the kind of thing they're thinking about, so. Since we have 550 miles of roads, that will be a gradual, a gradual effort. Any questions on that?
Well, I guess the only question would be is, will this impact at all our 2040 comprehensive plan because that dealt a great deal with bike trails and things?
The current plan was looked at a lot. We were looking at the update for the action plan of the regional plan. We tried to incorporate as much as we could. But whenever, you know, you're supposed to update your comprehensive plan, your master plans, every five years. So we will probably want to make sure that they follow each other once we got this, and then it's time to update the comp plan a year or two. Then we will want to make sure that they speak to each other still. But we did, we did refer to the comp plan for us.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have a curiosity question. Did, have you made some committee appointments that maybe have not been made public?
Committee appointments, what?
I don't, I just heard Mr. Fowler say that he was on a, something to do with maybe a septic committee.
You just heard me say it?
Last meeting.
Well, we talked about it at a city council meeting.
Yeah, it was about several months ago. We talked about streets and, yeah, and a sewer septic committee. So we haven't had a lot of, well, we haven't had committee meetings in the sewer and septic. There's been some private conversations, but no technical meetings yet.
Nothing secret. We talked about it at a city council meeting.
Don't recall any, about any appointments to any committees or who was on any committees, but maybe it did. I know the committees were talked about, but I don't recall anybody being appointed to a committee, but maybe.
Oh, okay. Well, Wendy Hughes is on the Street Committee, and Craig and Doug and Larry were on the Sewer Septic Committee. Sorry, I got away from the mic a little bit there. Okay, the next thing, we already did the one discussion item. The other discussion item is the youth council. And I think our city clerk was going to say a few words about that.
Mayor Flynn, sorry. Is this on?
Sounds like it, yeah.
Good. Mayor Flynn asked if I would speak to this because when we were at the last municipal league of convention, one of the breakout sessions that I attended was on establishing a youth council. And being an educator most of my life, this one grabbed me. So I went, and the main speaker was Mark, I think it's Studola. He was the mayor of Little Rock, the capital, in 2007, and also the president of the municipal league. And he, at that time, one of his goals that he set as a priority was to promote civic education among young people, but just to promote civic education. And so he set out to establish a youth council at, in Little Rock, and they have a thriving youth council now. And so there was a young man there who's headed off to Middlebury College in Vermont who served for three years on that youth council. And he told about why it was so helpful to him to serve and how he learned about city government. And he decided, actually, I think he worked a little bit with his city attorney, and he's deciding to go with the law, international law. But it was, it was actually quite inspiring. And I began to, you know, dream a little bit for this stuff. So I thought, well, I'm sure it doesn't seem like we really need a youth council here. I understand that we haven't had very many youth. But this is just to kind of plant a seed. The municipal league is talking about it a lot. In fact, they printed up this booklet, and you can see it's June 23, establishing youth council. They wanted to make it like an ABC process for a city because they really want to see cities establish youth councils. Some of the reasons behind it, the whys, and then I'll sit down. I promised the mayor I wouldn't talk too much, but it's exciting to me to think about. So the why behind a youth council, it gives young people, and these wouldn't be just any young people. These are young people in the community that represent probably each of the high schools that are represented by residents in Bella Vista, probably a homeschooler or a charter young person who already shows leadership potential and who's interested in community development. And it gives them a real world experience, for one thing, with elected bodies. It also teaches them about the role of councils and boards and commissions. And it helps them to be better in the classroom and enhances their classroom discussions in civics. It increases youth volunteerism because part of the youth council usually involves them helping the city with volunteer projects. And I won't go on because this is just the beginning. I think this is a wonderful document. I think if you read it, you'll know what you think. I just wanted to present this as an idea for the city, and then a lot could follow, but I think. Are there any questions?
I think it was a good idea handing this out so we could read it over and get an idea. Wanda did speak briefly, I think, with someone from Gravette High School, and they were, meaning a teacher or...
No, she's a superintendent.
Yeah.
Maribel Childress, Maribel Childress. She's a superintendent at Gravette. And when I asked her what she thought about this idea, she just kind of lit up, and she said, well, I started a superintendent's council of high school reps, and it's been wonderful. She said, they have ideas I would never have thought of. And she recommended at Highland, and she said, I can think of several students in the Gravette High School that I would already recommend. But she said more importantly, she would want to find a teacher, a Bella Vista resident teacher who's also really interested in civics education. And she thought she could find somebody like that for us to work with who could help us, you know, find a range of applicants. And then that would be the goal for, she said you would want a teacher from every high school. And then also one thing, Suzanne from the library said that, now, they have a teen council set up. And she just mentioned that she thinks it's a great idea, but also that one of their young people on the council, she didn't give me any, but she said he would be a wonderful applicant. She said it's surprising how aware he is and educated and such a good worker, so there you go.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone have anything else? Okay, in that case, we'll see you next Monday, and we're adjourned.